He says, "I was surprised you pay taxes and that's a lot of money. How do you do it?" It's like, "Yeah." And, you know, they complain about the rents and whatever.
Okay, guys, we're ready to go. I'd like to call the order, the March twentieth, two thousand eighteen special meeting of the Chino Valley Planning and Zoning Commission. Call the order. So pledge of allegiance, Tom, would you lead us, please?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Armstrong?
Here.
Commissioner Welker?
Here.
Commissioner Bacon?
Here.
Commissioner Baker? Commissioner McCafferty?
Here.
Vice Chair Paziac?
Here.
Chuck Merritt.
I'm here.
Chair Merritt.
I would also like to welcome our new member of the commission, John McCafferty, whose first meeting is tonight. Thank you for serving. Okay, item four, a consideration of possible actions to approve the March sixth, two thousand eighteen minutes of the regular meeting. Have you, everybody had a chance to review it?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make-
Since I didn't participate in the meeting, I shouldn't probably comment or vote on that one.
That's fine. We'll just, if you wouldn't mind abstaining in your vote also, that would be good.
Chair, may I address, the town clerk, I don't believe you have to abstain, but you're welcome to if you'd like to.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes from the March sixth, two thousand eighteen planning commission meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Item five is staff reports.
Thank you, Chair, and Commissioners. Great to be back after just two weeks and we appreciate you being here tonight on this special meeting. Addressing that there's an agenda item for withdrawal, the case that we were holding the special meeting for ended up withdrawing. We were moving as quickly as we could to accommodate them as really a public interest project of affordable senior housing that was needed, a tax incentive application due by April second. That's why we were rushing it. But due to other circumstances, they had to withdraw. So, thank you for that tonight.
Is it going to come back to us, maybe?
It might come back next year. This is the second year in a row where they've kind of thrown something at us at the last second and we're all scrambling to try to accommodate them and meeting, you know, obviously statute requirements for citizen review and such. But we did our best on staff side. We made it happen. Unfortunately, it didn't work out. But that would have been, you know, a nice, a nice starter project for Hoxnes. But not to talk out of turn on the agenda, I did want to go over a couple items. I wanted to focus tonight on some of the improvements that we've been doing internally. You probably aren't aware of them, but staff has been working on a number of initiatives internally to improve our records keeping, improve the way we process cases and improve the way our documents look to the public. One of the things that we've been doing is working on our zoning map, the official zoning map for the town. Unfortunately, it hadn't been updated in quite some time. We had a GIS technician that left employment and then we didn't have someone there to really do the updates. And so we finally, with working our, with our new GIS technician, have a new map. I'll bring it up here and let you see it. But we're working on coloring and such, but it's at least up to date. And so if you'd ever like a copy of it, we can provide you a paper copy. Otherwise, we are intending to post it on the town's website. I'm working, as much as I like the Easter egg colors, we may go to a more conventional map color palette, you know, commercials red, single-family residential is different gradations of yellow and orange depending on the density, you know, multifamily is brown, all that type of stuff. So, for now, at least the cases are on here, so you can feel confident if you look at this map that the zoning on the parcel is correct. And not just that, we've also been looking at identifying actually zoning map errors from times past. You may encounter blended zoning on some parcels that are kind of confusing. It'll say like CL SR one. And you're like, "Okay, which is it? Is it commercial or is it single-family residential?" And in digging in old records, we're finding that they actually did delineate zoning district boundaries within the parcels, but when they updated the map, they just blanket zoned them with both districts without showing the actual partition between the two separate zoning districts. So that's actually an error. So we've been working on that so that our records are more reliable. We've been updating our public notices. So the notices that we send out to let the public know about this meeting, for example, we've been improving them based on some experience I've had elsewhere. I brought some templates over and had our GIS technician and Alex work on them. Let me show you what this looks like. This is our new public hearing notification that goes out. So let me zoom out a little bit so you can see more of it. But you can see up there on the screen, it's very organized, it's very succinct. It tells you what you need to know. Rather than having long-form letters go out to the public, which sometimes people glaze over them and don't read them, I feel like you can kind of see what you're looking for pretty quick. And for items like this, we can also add the neighborhood meeting date. So we only have to send out one notice and save the town a little bit of postage on some of these sites, but we get the message across. The other thing we're doing is creating official zoning exhibits for your cases. You know, some of our applicants aren't necessarily that adept at graphics programs and preparing nice zoning exhibits for us. They're relatively inconsistent. And if you do research on any of our ordinances, ten years back, even four years back, sometimes we don't even have zoning exhibits that illustrate what the zoning ordinance adopted. So you're trying to figure out what happened here ten years ago, you know, employee turnover. I don't remember the case. So we've adopted official zoning exhibits. We've already kind of vetted this with legal. It meets Yavapai County Recorder's Office requirements for submittal because it's clear when it's printed in black and white, you can read everything legibly and it needs to be that way when attached to an ordinance. But if you see here, it's very clear when an ordinance comes out, these will also be put into your P and Z packets as part of your staff report. So some of these kind of home-drawn exhibits we get will be rectified with an official zoning map with our C on it. So you can feel confident that the boundaries are drawn correctly and it's correct. And the way this works in our process that we've improved is we create that notice of public hearing and our GIS technician creates a shape file for that zoning case that carries through to the zoning exhibit and then it carries through to the zoning map official update once the ordinance is adopted. And it's what we transmit to Yavapai County for update on the zoning on their maps. So it's all part of kind of a complete process improvement that we've been doing. Lastly, I have a draft of the new UDO. If you ever want to see it after, after the meeting. It will, I forgot to press double-sided printing, sorry. But you can see the new format and structure. It's been completely restructured. Same exact content as the existing UDO, but a lot of the, for example, land use definitions, which are long-form text, have been reduced to land use tables with definitions in the glossary. Development standards that are written long-form that say twenty feet from this, all spelled out or all in development standard charts, which are much easier to read and consolidated. And then we meet with the UDO Subcommittee on the twenty-eighth and we're going to start attacking content bite by bite. We have to digest it in pieces because it's still a big document. And we'll be setting up constituent lists for each of the different sections of the code. As we've discussed before, for example, for redoing all of the residential districts, I intend that we'll probably add three or four new districts, smaller lot districts to accommodate growth pressures. We'll include all of the home builders in Chino Valley area to participate in kind of workshop meetings so we can hammer out code revisions and include those that are actually doing work in those industries so that we vet this out and don't, you know, write text in a vacuum. So those are some of our biggest projects. Another one that we just recently did, I don't have it quite up yet. Our GIS tech is refining it, is an enhanced general plan land use map. There was some discussion, I believe, at the last meeting that the land use for a property wasn't, you know, was it commercial designated or was it medium-density residential? It's right on the line. I'm having our GIS tech take our entire, our parcel maps and underlay it under the general plan so that we can actually see the exact parcel location underneath the general plan map. So there's never a question on what that parcel's been designated. The last thing you want to do is have a hearing and not know if it conforms with the general plan or not.
No, that wouldn't be bad.
Yeah. So that's, you know, we've got all of that stuff in order. The last thing that we've been doing is, you may not be aware, but our zoning case file system was more or less non-existent. It was done through a weird kind of parcel numbering system, which doesn't work from an entitlement case management standpoint. So internally, we are rebuilding all of our zoning case files, our conditional use permit files that are our pre and final plat files, starting from now, and they're going to work our way back to two thousand, then we'll see if we still have the stamina to keep going. It's a big process, you know, trying to piece together old reports, old exhibits with ordinances, associated development agreements. All of that stuff needs to be kind of recompiled so that we have accurate files. So that's my event, my update on current events in regards to staff process improvement. In regards to new projects, as I said, be prepared, we're going to have a lot of cases coming forward. We have now as many zoning case files filed in the first two and a half months of the year as we had in all of two thousand seventeen. And I've got seven, no, six cases to initiate rezonings and general plan amendments on in the next four weeks. So you'll see a lot on your agenda. And then for feasibility, in the next few weeks, we have two subdivision plats that are coming forward, preliminary plats, for another three hundred seman dots. And they'll be somewhat complex with, you know, development agreements, water rights and things like that. So it's busy.
Hopefully you'll keep us out of the woods.
Yeah. Well, we have the right team. So we've got everybody on board with Frank Marbury. He's, you know, hopefully going to bring on his assistant engineer in the near term and with our water consultant. So. And that's it for current events.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to applaud what he has said. I think that all of, everything that he's instituting is very much needed in the town of Chino Valley. And thank you for your insight into doing these things.
Any help is good help. Okay, so we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. As noted earlier, item six A has been put aside for this meeting with possible look at it at some date in the future. So we will move forward to item six B. Consideration of possible action regarding a request for a zone change for a property generally located east off of State Route eighty-nine, east of the corner of Staley Lane and Durham Drive at thirty-eight forty-five Durham Drive, Chino Valley, Arizona, eight-six-three-two-three. The applicant is requesting a rezone the two-point-five acre property from CL Commercial Light to CH Commercial Heavy. Alex, would you please guide us through?
Good evening, Commissioners. Before you, you have an application by Mr. Mendoza to rezone his property. Here you see a land use designation map or an area map indicating where the property is located at. It stated it's located east of State Route eighty-nine in the corners Staley Lane and Durham Drive. This is also used as a land use map. As you can see, the surrounding areas or the commercial properties around it are that of commercial heavy. And I'll make reference back to this, to this slide again. The property is identified with two-point-five acres. It is currently vacant at the time. Here's the zoning map. As indicated, it is commercial light. The properties directly to the north and the south of it is commercial heavy. Those properties to the west are commercial light, adjacent to State Route eighty-nine, you see commercial heavy as well. So just reference back to the first slide again. As you see, these properties are, most of them are commercial heavy in nature. There are similar uses. The property to the south is being used as a contractor's yard. The property to the north is that of mini storage. The property to the to the west right here, to our manufacturing, is actually commercial light. We're in the process of working with them as well because of the existing uses. They need to have commercial heavy zoning. So you'll be seeing that the first week of April. The land use designation of this property is commercial slash multifamily residential. The proposed zoning is in accordance with the land use. So as you, many of the Commissioners know, Mr. Mendoza has a commercial property on Form North. It's, I believe it's CNR Trucking. And his purpose is to move that commercial property or that use to this new location. His business consists of doing maintenance on heavy trucks or heavy vehicles and doing maintenance on those vehicles. So Mr. Mendoza is requesting a zone change to this specific property from the commercial light to the commercial heavy. Staff supports the applicant's request of a zone change due to the fact the general area consists of heavy commercial uses. And the, and the commercial light property that's to the west is vacant right now. So it's not going to have a negative impact if, if the zoning has changed on that. If the, if the commission has any questions of myself, then I might be able to answer. This is the site plan that the applicant submitted. As you see here, he's proposing two buildings. This one's going to be a storage area with their caretaker residence. And the one to the front is going to be the office and where the trucks are going to have maintenance. He's going to have landscape, a landscape strip in the front. I believe this is already fenced off and this area is also fenced off. Yes, sir.
Go ahead. There was a neighborhood meeting on March the fourteenth.
Yes, Commissioner Paziac, sorry about that. There was a, a meeting last week, the property owner to the north, who represented the property owner to the north, is the only one that attended that, that meeting. She didn't have any issues with the type of business he was bringing to this area. She just wanted to know what the timeframe was on him building the site. And she specifically says that she was in support of the, of the zone change if it was to go forward.
Anybody have any questions for Alex?
I have a question on the fencing. I looked at the piece of property. That fencing that's around that piece of property is somewhat suspect. Do we expect Mr. Mendoza to improve the fencing?
Yes, sir. The UDO requires this type of use. We're considering contractors yard or storage area. The UDO requires him to have a minimum of a six-foot fence, no more than eight feet. So wherever that he's going to have his designated area for storage is going to have to be fenced off.
So the whole property doesn't have to be fenced?
If he's considering the whole property as a storage area, if he's going to have the semis throughout all the property, it's going to have to be fenced off completely.
Okay, because the trucks do take up quite a bit of room, so.
Yes, they do. His, I believe his current site where he's at right now is completely fenced off. So we're going to be looking something similar to that. We did discuss the fact that the, that in the rear, it's budding state land and that'd be up to staff to consider if that has to be fenced off or not.
So the sides and the front?
The sides do because of the current businesses that are there in the front as well.
Okay.
And just to be, be as a buffer to the adjacent properties.
Alex does a chain link fence meet code?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah, it's screen chain link fence.
Yeah, you can't see through it, basically.
Exactly, yeah.
Any other questions? Any concerns? Okay, I would entertain a motion. Oh, excuse me. Does the owner wish to speak at all?
Don't believe the owner is here.
Okay. So let's open this up for public hearing, for the public to come up and speak for just a minute if there's anybody interested. I see nobody has volunteered, so if there's no further discussion from the commission, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval to Town Council of this request to rezone approximately two-point-five acres of real property located off the corner of Staley Lane and Durham Drive, east of State Route eighty-nine, thirty-eight forty-nine Durham Drive, Chino Valley, Arizona, eight-six-three-two-three, from CL Commercial Light to CH Commercial Heavy.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussions? Any questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, so moving out of the public hearing portion of our meeting into the non-public hearing action items. Is this item seven or item eight?
I'm just setting up the, I apologize, Chair. The applicant had an additional PowerPoint I just received. I was going to try to load it up as well. The discussion items for Brook Apartments is the next item, number, oh, I'm sorry, eight.
Yeah, we have item seven, non-public hearing action items. Do we have any of those? Okay, so we'll move on to item eight, discussion items.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, the discussion item, again, this is a study session item. We've addressed this several times in the past in an effort to bring projects of significance or uniqueness to the town before the commission so that you have more time to review the project prior to having to take, you know, action on it. In this case, you know, we do believe that this project will generate some public interest for the neighbors. I just wanted to kind of reset, you know, our parameters for what the study session hearing is. So this item goes on the P and Z agenda and is posted on the website. But notices are not sent to the neighbors for study session items because it's simply information sharing. Staff nor the commission nor the applicant are lobbying or positional bargaining on the project, yet staff has no recommendation. It's simply a matter of getting the information in front of you on an agenda. So in regards to that, we typically do not have the applicant make a presentation because it appears as though we're trying to litigate the project without having done citizen participation yet. In fact, this hasn't even gone to its neighborhood meeting yet, which I believe is next week. So, but that said, we had the special meeting and want to get you the information sooner than later. If members of the public do wish to speak, the chair can entertain that, but I would be very hesitant to get into a match of seemingly negotiating the project. So again, remember, it's information on the table. The applicant does want to address the commission and I've advised, certainly Ruth knows what she's doing, so that she would keep it to just informational sharing and really keep it super simple and answer questions so that there's not a public perception that we've usurped the citizen review process, which is very important, especially if this ends up being a contentious project due to its nature. So that's my long-winded, just making sure we have it all out on the table. I know you guys know that, but I also feel that the public should also know and hear it from me.
Do you mind if I read this in? Because I didn't read in the location. Sorry about that. That was my fault.
No, it's fine.
Okay, so this is item eight, a Brook Apartments, a six-point-eight-five acre project generally located approximately one thousand four hundred feet west of State Route eighty-nine and six hundred and twenty feet south of West Road two-north at seven forty West Road one-north is scheduled to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission on May first, two thousand eighteen. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property from MR one, which is multifamily residential, one acre minimum, to MR one multifamily residential, one acre minimum with a, with a planned area development overlay. So now that that's read into the record and our instructions received from you, we'll move forward.
Perfect. Thank you, Chair. All right, of course, we presented a PowerPoint. We've got some exhibits we'd like to share with you. And as I said, the applicants here, I believe Ruth Mayday has a couple exhibits that I may not have, including building elevations, which will be part of the PAD. Whenever we have a project of this significance, I want to see conceptual elevations attached to the ordinance so that we have some understanding of what the commission and council may or may not be buying into. So the subject property is located here. It's immediately south of the Heritage Place Commercial Subdivision, which has been final-platted and roads dedicated to the town, I believe. You can see it's due south almost. You can see the Walgreens over there at two-north at the corner across from the Safeway. So you continue west. The road through Heritage Place Commercial Subdivision has not yet been paved. Those improvements are under negotiation now between the town and multiple property owners that are impacted in the area. And you may recall, Hoxnes is to the north and west. Another image from the site here. Again, it's six-point-eight-five acres. The existing zoning is MR one that they want to do as a planned area development overlay for a significant uptick in the requested density. As you may know, the MR one zoning district caps at about fourteen and a half units per acre. The way it's defined in the code is that each unit should have a three thousand square feet of land area associated to it. And the equivalent density here would be nearly ten units per acre more than what's currently allowed in the MR one. So that's why they're requesting the planned area development overlay to deviate from the allowed density. We're still working through if there's any other requested deviations from the UDO. You can see the MR one zone property here. Again, it already has an entitlement for multifamily development, albeit at a lesser density. And you can see the surrounding zoning, SR one to the west, SR one to the south, kind of that mixed weird zoning to the east, CL AR five, CL zoning to the north. So it's got an interesting context. So as you can imagine, we'll be looking at the intensity of this project and how it may be buffered to mitigate those impacts against lesser intense land uses. Shown here in the general plan, it's in the multifamily commercial corridor that typically straddles the eighty-nine. As well, it's in the future community core, the largest one in the town. So the general plan does generally support projects of more intensity and diverse land uses to support kind of a mix of uses in those cores. It doesn't specifically call out, you know, specific projects, but it does generally support greater diversity and intensity than would otherwise be common, even in the commercial multifamily area. I had Alex and I discuss today that we thought this may come up. You know, there's other apartment complexes nearby that have been discussed. In fact, Hoxnes was on your agenda tonight and got pulled. But just to give you some locational reference, you can see the Village North planned area development over, you know, to the east of Safeway. That project, I believe, is kind of stalled out due to financing and other issues. And there have been some inquiries recently about potential other land uses for that site. Hoxnes planned area development, I apologize, is actually to the north and east, has a two-hundred-and-twenty-four units in two phases over fifteen acres. They had a planned area development overlay as well that specified the number of units for, you know, different types, whether one or two bedrooms. And then this would be the third apartment complex in the core area with a proposal for one-hundred-and-ninety-two units spread across four buildings that are all three stories. This is the preliminary site plan or the development plan that would be associated and tied to any prospective ordinance. You can see, only looking from south to north, there are four buildings. I think they may be identical. I'm not certain, but they're pretty close. I heard a yes. And so those units would be spread out like that. In preliminary meetings with the applicant during feasibility and technical review, we had a concern with the prior proposed plans in the way that they kind of had a barracks appearance. There wasn't enough open space. Generally, associated land use principles are as you increase density, you become more thoughtful and take care of care in where your open space is because people are going to be living in more dense quarters. You want to make sure that your parking is evenly distributed, your trash enclosures are evenly distributed and that there's places for people to walk their dogs, for places for children to play and that there's pedestrian circulation. So demographically speaking, typically people that would live in apartment units may disproportionately not have an auto or car and may be more reliant on bicycle or walking. So we want to make sure that this project has a circulation of all sorts throughout if it were to move forward. We did request a conceptual landscape plan, primarily one because it's required and it's part of the PAD. When you have a planned area development, you could ask for more exhibits. They want to deviate from standards and then we want to see the quality and the mitigation efforts, especially when you're in increased density by almost double. In this case, you can see that they've provided perimeter landscaping in their conceptual plan. Double row of trees along the south because there are residences to the south. That was a primary concern of staff. How would a three-story building stack look up against a one-acre property or greater in size? So that is quite a juxtaposition in land uses. So we look at mitigation efforts generally through landscaping and building orientation. The prior plan, I believe, had the building closer to the property line. They've since shifted it. And I don't have any other exhibits. This is what's been proposed. However, Ruth is here. She does have a PowerPoint we can load. We did not receive the building elevations in time to include in the PowerPoint, but those will be included in your packets for hearings and tentative hearings in May. What I would like to let you know is that this is a bit of a complex project. It's not just some straightforward rezoning case. There is a significant land use intensity associated with it. We recognize housing needs, so there'll be all things considered. But aside from that, the project is taking access to an undeveloped commercial subdivision. So there'll be significant off-site improvements to provide that access. And then as well, utility extensions coming all the way back from the, you know, basically the back of Walgreens or that area where the sewer and the water is. We have met with the applicant and other associated property owners, like Travis Bard, the commercial realtor, owns the commercial subdivision to the north. You know, we're looking at, I'm not sure if Mandalay Homes will be involved from Hoxnes and any others in regards to a possible cost-sharing agreement and regards to infrastructure extensions. That includes streets, sidewalks, any necessary changes. That includes streets, sidewalks, any necessary changes to Two North, and then the street through the commercial subdivision, to what extent it will be improved or left for future development when those commercial parcels are ready to go. That meeting was just last week, so we'll be working with the town's legal council to draft all of those documents, likely to run in tandem with an ordinance. We're not certain that we would want to entertain changing the land use on this property until we've squared away, you know, the basics of how we get people in and out and how we get utilities to them. So, that will be forthcoming, and just so you know, development agreements typically don't come to P and Z, they'll go directly to council, but I'd certainly keep you abreast of the contents of such, and, you know, we can provide it as a reference document when it comes forward to you if it's ready. That's my long-winded presentation. So, as I said, it's complex, so there's a bit of, a few moving parts, and again, I would anticipate that it will generate some public interest.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I think it's, you just want to pull your presentation up off your jump drive, I think it's right here. There you go, you can click on what you want.
Well, we don't want my fishing picture set, that's for sure. Good evening, Commissioners, it's nice to be back in front of you. This is a very nice project, the Brook Apartments. Again, this is purely informational so that you get a chance in advance of the planning and zoning meeting to see exactly what's being proposed, what the development will look like when it's complete, the landscaping, the signage, the color schemes, and all of those sorts of things. Whoops, wrong one. So as Jason pointed out, this is the general location of the project, this is the property here. This is the Heritage Point, and this is the Hawksnest Drive that does cut through Heritage Point that would be, provide the access to Two North. Again, this is the site plan, this has got a little bit more detail, you can see some more detail into the roof line. We have done some shifting around of structures just to try and keep enough buffer to adequately landscape. The site, again, is six point, excuse me, 8.5 acres. We do plan on four structures that will include one- and two-bedroom apartments, and we will have full parking for all of those units. Whoops. Come on. This is another version of the preliminary landscape plan, it's essentially the same distribution of plants. You can see here a little bit more detail about the types of plants, you know, clearly we're going to be using evergreen trees along the boundaries here to buffer here and here and increase the density so that it is less impactful, especially in this corner where we have adjacent single-family residential uses on one-acre lots. This is one of the building elevations that we'll have for these apartments. As you can see, they're not just a flat structure, they're not barracks-like at all, there is some dimension to the building, these color, the brick red and the sable brown areas do actually pop out from the wall, so there is some depth to the wall. There's some architectural interest in the roof line as well. And you can see the variety of plants used for landscaping. The intent here is to use as many xeriscate plants as possible so that we can minimize water usage on this project. Again, this is another angle of the same building. These are the floor plans, they're kind of hard to read, but it does give you an idea of what each floor will look like for each building, the one-bedroom arrangements and the two-bedroom arrangements. This is the entry feature, the signage for the apartment. We do have hard copies of these if you'd like to see them up close. There's also a gazebo planned for the park area. Let's back up. That's up here, we have gazebos planned here and one up here, so that there'll be some area for people to sit outside, eat, cook out, hang out. And the gazebo will echo the same colors as scheme and roofing materials as the apartment buildings will. As Jason mentioned, we did meet with the town last week to start discussing extensions of sewer and water, roads, and other infrastructure that's necessary to see this project to fruition. We will be working with the town on a development agreement and a possible reimbursement district depending upon what the expanded traffic impact analysis comes back with. So, this is kind of an overview for your consumption of what the project should look like, and we intend it to look like. I'd be happy to answer any of the questions you have. Chris Fergus is the architect for this project, he has some hard copies, like I said, of the color renderings if you'd like to see some of those. We have Michael Lopez as the engineer for the project, and also Tim Emberlin is representing the developer, he'd be happy to answer any questions you may have as well.
Guys, anybody want to start?
I'll have a general question for Jason. Jason, when Hawksnest came in and the other project to the east of Safeway, the apartment complex, we were going to have traffic studies done as to see the impact on Road Two South, Road Two North, and at the intersection there. Have those traffic studies been received by the town?
Chair and Commissioner Bacon, right now, as of our meeting last week, we discussed the traffic impact analysis that would be necessary. Certainly, the developer is driven by creating a traffic impact analysis that, you know, addresses the impacts of their specific project, but do, with the direction of Frank Marbury, our Public Works Director, we are going to do a dual-scope contract that includes the impact of their project, and then the town is going to work on a larger, larger scope project that will address the surrounding area, I think as far as Road One West, and then also address Two North intersection with 89, so that we can see all of the infrastructure improvements we would need in that area and not look at each project singularly. So we should have that. Our intention is that we won't come to a public hearing until we can provide you and council Frank Marbury's specific recommendations on improvements related to this project and larger area that are needed with all the projects you've approved.
Commissioner Pathiak, you have a question?
Just, just a couple of, thank you, just a couple of comments, and maybe it's, maybe it was mentioned in the presentation and I missed it, but the development to the north of this one has not been constructed, so is this department, development going to construct the access to Two North and the related detention that may be needed off-site?
Chair and Vice Chair, that was also a subject of our meeting. The applicant has proposed a specific set of off-site plans that would include paving across that commercial subdivision in conformance with the, we, currently, the town has the right-of-way, it's just not improved. And it's, I mean, I don't know, 24 feet or something of paving. We're negotiating negotiations right now if we want the full local street constructed with this project. In regards to any related detention, they're going to have to figure out perhaps temporary basins for the commercial project, and of course, this project will install and landscape permanent basins for its associated retention.
I'm, I'm just noting on the plans that they have a detention basin on the northwest corner that drains into, again, this undeveloped commercial.
Chair and Vice Chair, that's correct. Frank Marbury, right now, is working with Michael, their engineer, I'm sure, you know, Michael, so they're coming up with the solution on how all of this off-sheet flows and onsite retention are all squared away.
Okay.
And we can address that specifically when we bring it back for hearing, it's still being vetted.
And have comments been received from the Chino Valley Irrigation District? They have an easement on the right side of the property, and apparently it looks like that is going to be landscaped.
Chair and Vice Chair, I don't have specific formal comments addressed to the town that I'm aware of, but I know that the applicant has met with them and are in discussions with it, we can address that as well in the future hearing.
And if a second access is needed to the site, you have 192 units?
Vice Chair, the Assistant Fire Marshal, Andy Smith, is addressing that. I believe right now, the current circulation is provable, I believe, I think the units have to be sprinkled or something like that, is that correct? So with them being sprinkled, there's certain provisions for numbers of units.
I'm, I'm talking about access if there's an accident on Two North that blocks the only road in.
That's correct. Vice Chair, she's addressing emergency access as well. Initially, I believe we were considering that we would need a second access point, and 192 units is certainly up there. For single-family subdivisions, we've required secondary access, I believe, if we go over 25 or 40 units. So with this, though, with them being sprinkled, I think, I understand it could be a medical emergency, not a fire emergency, so I'll, I'll make sure that Andy provides specific comments to that, and those come through also the engineering team, so Frank Marbury will have to take a position on that as well.
So it sounds like, oh, go ahead.
Are these going to be public or private roads?
Vice Chair, we'll have a public road access to the entry of the subdivision, it'll be private drive by us throughout for circulation.
And just one observation, it looks like Building One is encroaching into the building setback line on the north end of the property, is this just, I mean, I think it's easy enough to move it in the next plan, but...
Yes, Chair and Vice Chair, we're cognizant of that, and they'll be doing that through secondary visions.
Sure, thank you.
You're welcome.
So it sounds like the property to the northeast, is the access out to Road Two North is pretty critical to the development of this whole setup, or is they working together for drainage and, and also utilities will have to come up through the public portion of that road, am I correct?
Yes, Chairman, we actually, Travis Bard is the owner of the property, prospective developer, I'm not certain if he's going to develop himself, he may, or if he's going to turn it and have someone else develop it, but he was in the meeting with us discussing the broader improvements required, and he recognizes that even though it's town right-of-way, we can, we can do it, we need to in our own right-of-way, it's, since it's been dedicated, there may be other impacts that we have to address like drainage on his property. So we're continuing to work with him. I believe that once we get to a development agreement and perhaps cost reimbursement and cost sharing or whatever, it will address all of those issues. It will be outside of the ordinance, so just keep in mind, typically zoning ordinance can only relate to impacts within the perimeter of the property, up towards the half-street improvements. Once you extend off that premise, you're going into development agreement territory because it's a private agreement between the town and any number of development parties.
And that's good, but, you know, we're just expressing some concerns here.
Absolutely.
Where your, I understand the project's going to be, have city water and city sewage?
Commissioner McCafferty, yes.
And how far away right now is, are we from like the gravity main for the sewage? Is it far distance, or is it relatively close?
Um, let me see what I've got here, I'm borrowing your PowerPoint. Okay, oh, I think I passed it. This can kind of help, for what it's, you can kind of see, no, you can't actually, this one barely. If you go up to Road Two North, which is at the top of that exhibit, and you go to the east, it's more or less, I think, to the back of the town's, there's a town facility there, it's not far from the back of the Walgreens, so it would have to extend over several hundred feet and then drop down through the commercial subdivision through that local street.
And that's the gravity main, is that true, is also the water company?
I'm sorry? Both of them are about in the same area?
Okay.
Yeah, I think they're on just different sides of the street, I'm not sure, I can let the engineer speak on that.
And then earlier, I heard you make reference to double landscaping on the southern border because of the single whole residency there. What about the whole western, because you also have residents right there in the southwest corner?
Thank you, Commissioner, the, the landscape buffer on that site is quite a bit larger because that's where the largest amount of drainage is flowing to into that basin in the northwest corner. We can look at that. I did notice a discrepancy between what I had as an exhibit and what Ms. Mayday presented. I looked in her black-line version of the landscape plan, a single row of trees, but I believe we discussed a double row of evergreen trees such as pine, so we don't have, you know, visibility into the project in the winter months.
And then the last question I have is, I, I was reading, you have three standard, three deviations that are requesting from the UDO. On the other two projects that were, one behind Walgreens and the one behind Safeway for the apartments, was it practice there too, that they needed deviations from the UDO?
Commissioner McCafferty, they did request planned area development overlays. I don't have the files in front of me, but what I can do is I can do a matrix table of comparing the deviations between the three projects, and we can present those at the next hearing. I, I don't believe they were as dense, I think this is the more dense project.
Jason, if they weren't going for the PAD, what would the next zoning be to accommodate this density?
Chair and Commissioner Bacon, interestingly enough, as you know, we only have one multifamily zoning district. We don't have a couple gradations of density districts, so when you want to get to a higher dense project like this, when you get to 25 units per acre, you're definitely going to be three floors, you're maxing out on surface parking, you're minimizing open space, it's about the end of where you can go without having almost structure parking. Their deviations are to go 10 units per acre more. I believe, I know she said that they accommodated the parking, but my understanding is they might be nine short, although it sounds like the site plan has been changed a little bit since initial submittal. So we'd have to increase parking a little bit, drop the density down, and I forget the third deviation, but it'd be a significant change. We don't have a zoning district to accommodate this project. In the code rewrite, I would suggest we introduce districts that can accommodate development.
You know, we don't have a lot of options, there's all one way.
It's a small buffet.
I have another question regarding the general plan, and I'm picking up the line map here. Where would the general plan designation for commercial be on the map that you have on the screen now?
The property, this property does fall, first, first things first, it's already MR1, so they already have a base entitlement for multifamily development. It is the red district that aligns along the 89, underlays the commercial core designation on top of it. So it is a commercial multifamily residential underneath the community core designation, which further expands on the vision and intent if you're in the general plan, have a mix of uses and intensities in the core.
Anybody have any other questions?
Just one quick question, and maybe it's better left to the, when it actually comes to P and Z, but from the pictures, Ruth, is this all inside access to these apartments?
The corridor, I think the entrances are at either end of the building. Not, they don't have multiple entrances, I think you come in the corridor and all the apartments access, access up a central single corridor.
I, I just want to express my reservations on three stories next to some predominantly single-family residential areas, number one. Number two, for a PAD, and once again, the lack of consideration for some really recreational facilities that should be addressed at the study stage, rather than at the voting stage, where we're asked to vote on something on a particular evening when, with, with new information gathered in, in little time for negotiation. I think those are my two major concerns, as well as the development impacts for the widening and traffic congestion at that intersection, and also, once again, for children accessing the school without any sidewalks, again. So there, I think these are significant concerns.
Thank you.
Will the sidewalks that everybody keeps wanting us to build along that road be involved in the engineer's study for the whole, from the Highway Two, Road One West? Will we have a comprehensive, what would, what we would like to see happen plan for that?
Chair, that's a very high priority for both Development Services and Public Works. We recognize the high pedestrian activity associated with these projects and our largest commercial core immediately adjacent to it. There's been discussions where there's, some are trying to negotiate against doing the sidewalks and deferring improvements. Our preliminary position in our meetings is that is not negotiable, that we want pedestrian safe access to where it belongs, I mean, to town, and these are big projects, and it's not uncommon. We require sidewalks and developments with 7,000 square foot lots, I mean, and this is a high-density multifamily project.
Just for everybody's information, that this board has many times in the past heard about these sidewalk concerns, it's a major concern for us. I think for something like this, they may, should plan ahead for the fact that we're going to want to see something because there's a lot of people going to be living here, and those kids are going to have to get back and forth. I know the development across the road, which is now not doing anything, had a sidewalk system in their program, but that's not helping this one.
Yes, Chair, and just to elaborate a little bit more, we're, our concern is right now is the sidewalk extensions particularly on the north side of Road Two North, Road Two, the south side of Road Two North is a bit trickier to get to Two North. There may be some semblance of a crossing provided that would get people to the north side of Two North where we have the development proposals in place that could get those sidewalks, and hopefully soon, if Mandalay comes in and develops both portions of their project. The project to the west, we have not, the 90 acres to the west that's vacant from, on the west side of Hawksnest, we've not seen any development proposals. So I'm not certain how long it'll be before those come in. Again, working with Public Works, I'm not certain what a development agreement could look like that could illustrate exactly what improvements go where and whose pro-rata costs go to who. That's the intent, is we're going to have a game plan of sewer, water, roadway improvements and sidewalks. Who's doing what and how much it's going to cost, and who's paying when.
On the sidewalk topic here, just real quick, I want to, the site plan does call for interior circulation sidewalks, and as Jason mentioned, we have had meetings with the town about foot traffic and how to get it out to Two North and then disperse it safely from there. So it is something that the developer is cognizant of. We have been talking also with Travis Bard, who owns the property to the north, and discussed improvements with... Travis Bard, who owns the property to the north, and discussed improvements with him as well. So, it is something that the developer is cognizant of and that we fully expect to see hashed out in a development agreement.
And that would be a, I mean, we, that's just letting you guys know that we find this extremely important.
No, I get it. With respect to the open space, we do have a great deal of open space up in this area, even though some of it is set aside for detention, it's, it's a pretty healthy open area. We have this area right here in this park for a gazebo, we have a dog park, a community garden planned for that, and then there's also, this is all open space here, and a portion of this will likely end up being open space as well. So, we do address some of these recreational amenities and, and open space on the project so that it's not just, as Jason said, residential barracks set up. So, there are, there are gazebos, there are dog parks, there are areas for those type of activities, and also the school is in close proximity to this, as is the pool and the heritage, heritage and the large park over at Perkinsville Road. So, there are amenities available, with a project like this, it's a matter of trying to balance costs and, and, and keep these projects and these apartments where they can be, where they're affordable to the people in the community.
Just, and you know this from past experience, that Commissioner Bacon is going to be all over you guys to want to know all the details about this recreation stuff, so you might as well come prepared.
Oh, absolutely.
Any other questions, or?
One quick, has there been a public meeting scheduled for this yet?
Yes, there's, we have a neighborhood meeting next week.
Okay, I'm getting yes here and no there, so...
I know, it's okay. The neighborhood meeting has been scheduled, but if you meant like a public meeting, hearings, they're only tentatively set for May, we need to address the issues related to the improvement plans and bring, I want answers, not questions when we're at the hearing, so we'll make sure we have that, we'll also provide you an itemized list of the amenities, and if you'd like, we can also prepare a vignette of the open space, the primary entry space of the entry, so you can really see the details. You know, if they're going to build the project, they're going to have to figure that anyways, we might as well bring it forward through the PAD.
The more information, the better, this, several people raising their hands back here.
One question I have is, how much notice are you going to give people, this meeting's going to be next week, and I live in that area, and I didn't even know if they'd be able to fund it all. So, do you think you can give a reasonable amount of time to keep the communication out?
Just, we are on the public record right now, so I want to make sure if we're going to take comments from the public, I understand, it's just a quick question, we'll need to have people state their names so it's in the record. In regards to public noticing for neighborhood meetings, they're sent out a minimum of fifteen days prior to the meeting to all residents within three hundred feet of the project.
And that's standard practice for the town to issue those notices strictly according to whatever the laws are for the, for the town.
Yes, Chair, the three hundred feet notification is in the UDO, and as you saw earlier, we have the new enhanced notice of public hearing that goes out, so we usually do the same one for neighborhood meeting, I'm not sure if, but they did go out, I just confirmed with Alex.
Thank you.
I will add, Chair, because the member of the public is here, if they happen to live outside of that three hundred foot buffer and would like to be notified, we absolutely will include them on the public hearing notice.
They could approach you.
Absolutely.
This is a general question in regards to the development of the area, I noticed there are a number of large parcels, at least two or three available for sale along Highway sixty-nine, and there's this large parcel just immediately east of this proposed project that's vacant, has the town been contacted by anybody for potential development of any of those large parcels?
Let me pull the map up, Commissioner Bacon, off the top of my head, I'm not certain, we get numerous, numerous calls for the commercial brokers finding out if their client can build X, Y, and Z, I'm not certain off the top of my head of anything recent on those parcels, I see what you're saying, and they'd also have access directly to the state highway if they were to locate there, but I don't know off the top of my head, I'll check with my team if they've gotten calls.
Anybody else have any other questions? Any concerns right this point? I am reluctant, folks, to open the public portion of this meeting because there has not been a neighborhood meeting, I will take your one question, if you'll please step up to the podium and state your name, and then after that, I'm not going to give anybody else an opportunity to speak because we have not had the neighborhood meeting, and I think that's being premature to get involved with that.
And thank you, thank you Chair, if I may add, they are all welcome to speak with me or be contact staff to provide all of their comments in the typical form that we do prior to a hearing, it would be unfair to residents that have not been notified, that are not aware of tonight's meeting, that there's commentary on the project and it's being litigated.
My next wordage was going to see, see Jason, because he'll answer your questions. Very briefly, just state your name, ma'am.
Chris Foley, seven forty, West Road One North, I'm the adjoining property to the west, I'm the four acres, I'd probably be the most significantly impacted by this.
The one with the horse arena.
Yeah, so, my only comment for tonight is you listed my address as this project, and that kind of concerns me because I have...
I don't know, they'd probably like to have your land without any cost involved.
If we have, well, I tried to buy their land too, but it was too expensive.
What I would suggest is, now that that's something that's known, that Jason would be able to address that for you.
Thanks.
Okay, so I'm not going to do any more public because I think this is a bit premature for us, if anybody has any questions, please contact Jason or Alex at the Planning and Zoning Department and the town, and I'm certain that they will spend every effort they can answering your questions. Okay. So, any other questions while we're on this item?
I think I have one more question. Is there a wall proposed, or just landscaping around the project?
Commissioner Bacon, that's a great question, I'll have to double-check on this, I've, we've dipped into, let me ask Alex if he recalls, do you have a wall around this project anywhere, or is it all trees? Green, okay, the screen wall is for parking, and it actually is required, a three-foot wall to screen the fronts of vehicles and their lights, and then the rest of it's landscaping. However, because this is a PAD, just for future reference, if you do believe that a six-foot screen wall is necessary, it can be imposed on the project.
It can be.
Yes, it can.
Any other questions?
Can we just thank Jason for bringing this forward, and Ms. Ruth too, because if we'd have come to an actual P and Z meeting with the information we have, we'd have been here for a day and a half. So, appreciate the advanced notice.
We've been through that, and it is very greatly appreciated, that'll give us an opportunity to really look this over, and again, the more information that comes to us in the next meeting that we have on this project, the better we're going to like it because then we can make some good informed decisions.
Now, if I, in consideration with what you said, Mr. Chairman, this project will not be coming back before us for decision until we get a traffic study or something being done?
Chair and Commissioner Bacon, that's correct, the traffic impact analysis should be ordered anytime now, the project engineer and our Public Works Director are going to work out how that's going to look in terms of cost sharing. Once that analysis has been reviewed by our Public Works Director, he will make a recommendation, and those conditions related to that recommendation would be present in your staff report and subsequently carried to the ordinance if it were to be approved by the, in your recommendation.
Do you have any type of ETA for that?
Everybody's busy, Commissioner Bacon, I'm assuming it could take four weeks to do a traffic impact analysis, I'm not certain of the local company that's going to be selected and what their timeframe is. It's four weeks, I guess I did good on guessing.
Okay.
It's usually four weeks, whenever I've had to order them in the past, so...
And it's pretty, pretty much a standard setup that we wouldn't see this again any, without a traffic study, that was actually mentioned earlier in the presentation, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct, Chair, we wouldn't, staff wouldn't want to put P and Z and council in the position of taking action on items and then not know what improvements are necessary.
Great. Anybody else? Alrighty, so we're going to close this portion of the meeting and move to item nine, public comments, I'm going to read this statement, so you know what the rules are, this is a portion of the meeting where we call to the public as an opportunity for the public to address the commission on any issue within the jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged, individuals are limited to speak for three minutes, total time for call to the public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting, commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration, and a decision at a later date or responding to criticism. So, if anybody would like to speak, please step up to the podium and state your name and let us have it. Seeing no public participation, we'll move forward from this item to item ten, which is a motion to adjourn.
I move.
We have a motion?
How second?
We have five seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you gentlemen for serving.